I'm sorry, don't we normally do roll call and then pledge?
First, yeah, first call the roll.
Okay, Cindy, could you please call the roll? I was super confused and then I thought maybe I'm doing it backwards.
Kathy Grimal.
Here.
Erin Kilburg.
Here.
Tula.
Here.
Chris Lowe.
Present.
RJ Mathis.
Here.
Craig Meadows.
Present.
Aaron Meitzler.
Here.
All right, and Sue, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Dr. Hitchens, are there any items removed from or added to the agenda for tonight?
There are not.
All right, then the first item we have on our agenda is public comments. And we did have someone here with public comments. And I know Ms. Deitchman had already spoken to that person, but I will let her go through for the record.
We do have a new one.
Okay.
Our process here is that the speakers will be called up in order of form submission. We only have one. So the first form received, the first person invited to speak, when your name is called, please come to the podium so that you can be heard. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Ladies, we have Pat Hendricks and Rosie McVay.
Yes, thank you.
We're from the AAUW, the American Association of University Women. And we would like to express our appreciation to the board members and the school district that are doing such a good job to educate our children. And we just wanted to thank you and say that we support you 100%.
I just want to second my vote to Rosie's comments. I understand that this is basically an unpaid volunteer position, and you put in tremendous hours and hard work and all for the good of the district and the community's children. Thank you very much. We do appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That is very kind. All right, next item on our agenda is our BPS partners. Todd Swanson unfortunately could not be here with us tonight, but he did check in and he said he didn't have any comments for us. So he had an emergency, and please note, Todd, that we're thinking about you. All right, committee updates. Everyone's got new committees. I'm not sure if anybody's met with their committees yet. Does anyone have a committee update?
No.
No, those are coming fast and furious, though. So next month, we should have new board member committees and new board member committee updates. So the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, which is our opportunity to approve a number of routine business items with one vote. All of the details for each item in the consent agenda is in the board book. So I will have Mr. Pierce, please go through the consent agenda.
Yeah, we're moving right along here tonight. 4.1 and 4.2 is the approval of the July 19, 2022 special and regular meeting minutes. 4.3 is the approval of our August 8, 2022 special meeting minutes. 4.4 is the destruction of our closed session recordings from February 23, 2021. 4.5 is the review of our closed session minutes. 4.6 is our monthly personnel report. We did add something on there this year where we, on our personnel report, we added our tenured staff on there. And so congratulations to all of them. 4.7 is our payroll and bills. 4.8 is the approval of our donations to the district. Thank you to the Denham Fund and the Batavia United Way for their donations. They are appreciated. 4.9 is the approval of our Chromebook service contract renewal. 4.10 is the approval of the athletic trainer contract renewal. 4.11 is policy for approval. And 4.12 is the approval of the consent agenda.
All right, are there any items to be removed from or clarified on the consent agenda? All right, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Meadows, second by Meitzler, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I would like to say that we have a staff member in the audience whose name is on our retirement track now, and that makes me very sad, calling her out. She'll love me for that.
She's not sad. I'm not gonna talk about you, those.
That's not enough time. Next item on our agenda is our reports. So I will hand it over to Dr. Hitchens for the first two standard reports.
Yes, and as always, I would put it out there for any questions or comments. The FOIA request is something that we put out there monthly. These are the five that we have replied to since the last board meeting. And then the treasure reports are something you see every month.
Any questions on those? All right, then Sue was going to take us through his hiring report.
Yeah, first of all, thanks to the board. I had several folks reach out to me and ask questions and with different inquiries, and I appreciate that. It was an interesting hiring season, I would say, for us. You can see that I listed kind of our numbers for 2022. And then below that in the graphic, I listed some comparatives from the last couple of years. Couple of things to note that I didn't write on here was that 2022, we actually had 14 staff members who, we call it a reassignment of position or they took a different position within the district. We actually had 14 of those in 2022. And in the comparative years of 2019 and 2021, I think we had three or four each year. So that's a big shift for us. Should also be noted that these new staff that were hired, some of those are staff that are covering like full year leave of absences or maybe one-year positions, things like that. So they may not be staff members that are with us for the rest of their careers. Although a lot of times, people who work for us for a leave of absence or for a year position, they're kind of, that's like the farm system, if you will, and they show us they do a great job and are committed to our mission and vision and values. We often rehire them the following year, so it's a great opportunity. You know, a couple of interesting trends that you can probably observe yourself is that in our comparisons, we certainly continue to see that special education and student services positions are our highest turnover. I would tell you that if you talk to folks in HR across the entire state and in King County, they would probably tell you the same things. Every year, the ISBE asks for, they do a survey for HR offices about hard-to-fill positions, and they tend to be the same across all of our districts, special ed, student services, English language learners, and then a lot of times, math and science. We oftentimes have had challenges with high school Spanish, believe it or not. So if anyone is watching or listening and you're attending college and wondering what major you should have, I definitely have some recommendations for you in those areas. What has really been most challenging for us, I would say, this year is that a couple of things. You know, we want to improve our candidate pool of our diverse, of a more diverse staff. And getting people into that candidate pool has continued to be really challenging. Secondly, you know, in the past, it was an outlier if we had staff who were hired and ready to work for the new school year, like in mid-August. And it was an outlier if somebody would resign in late July or early August. And I would say this year, we have seen more of that than we ever have. We actually had a staff member in a hard-to-fill position resign on August 11, the day before our licensed staff members were coming back to work. And even this past weekend, we had a staff member in a hard-to-fill position who decided they were going to leave education. And didn't come back, worked for a week and a half and didn't come back to work on Monday. And these are, those are very unique circumstances for us. And as you can guess, they're hard-to-fill positions. And now we have these hard-to-fill positions once the school year has started. And those are the two positions from a licensed staff member viewpoint that are not currently filled. Adding to that, we're still missing parapros at Batavia High School, at Rotolo Middle School, and at our elementary levels. We are still looking for a, and by the way, the positions that are currently open that we would love to fill are, at the middle school, we have a speech and language pathologist position. And at Hoover Wood School, we have a special education position. Beyond the parapro positions, we have some lunch campus monitors that only work a couple hours a day, needed at Rotolo and at the elementary schools. And lastly, at the middle school, we would love to have a CNA, LPN, like a nurse's assistant position that is open. So those are, those are open positions. And when you look at it and compare ourselves to others in King County and statewide, I would actually contend we've done really, really well in filling those positions. You probably have all read articles about various districts across our area and the state that are, have, you know, tens, if not hundreds, of still missing positions in their classrooms. And so, you know, again, so to kind of circle back, again, I would say our biggest challenge is lack of diverse applicants in our hiring pool, which then translates to lack of diversity amongst our current staff members. Secondly, a lack of applicants in our hard-to-fill hiring pools overall. And then thirdly, we're short with parapros, right? That's, and I would like to say that with the parapro challenge, you know, again, I sent an email out to my counterparts in King County in late July, early August, and everyone replied within probably 24 hours just to, I needed maybe a little bit of emotional support to be like, are we the only ones like this? And everybody stated that they had challenges. And actually, when everyone shared their numbers with me, we actually stacked up maybe the best in King County in terms of where we were at with parapros. And I'm exceptionally proud of our staff and our special ed staff members in leadership positions for, despite having a lack of paraprofessionals, still having our kids properly supported in all of our buildings. I'm also happy to say, just in the last couple of days, we have been able to hire a couple of parapros, but obviously, there is still a need there. So those are really our big challenges. And I think a legitimate question is, so how are we going to approach these challenges, right? And so I'd like to share a little bit, a little bit about that. With our lack of diverse candidate pool, I would like to acknowledge that statewide, that's a challenge. The Illinois State Board of Education has a ton of initiatives that are happening to try to get more people of color and diverse populations actually into collegiate programs to get into that pipeline. I actually have a relationship with a local college, and they have me come out and kind of talk HR with their student teaching students. And I do that usually first semester and second semester. And it's been amazing, since I started doing that, probably in 2015, there was massive amounts of teacher prep students. And I did it last spring, and I think there was like 16 students. So like, the numbers have gone down. And so I would like to acknowledge that that's a challenge for a lot of us in the state. The second acknowledgement I'd like to make about that is it's going to take time to get there. And I think we're doing some things that will help, but I also think that there's things that we can do to improve upon that. And so, you know, we're working on our local pipeline. We've added some additional courses at Batavia High School to support our own students considering to become teachers. And I appreciate the work that Austin Savitsky and Mike Theriot have done. I think that they've already, they sent invites like in July or August to a lot of us to come and support those programs and speak to our own high school students to do that. I had the opportunity to be a part of a lot of, several job fairs this past spring. And I, to be honest with you, we, for the first time ever, the organization that I'm a part of in the state of Illinois, it's the, all the school personnel, HR people, like myself, across the whole state, they actually did a virtual job hiring fair. And I'll be honest, I was a little cynical about it at first. And it actually was phenomenal. It was one of the best things I've attended. And I will tell you that I had the opportunity to interact in a matter of like 90 minutes with probably over 75 prospective students. What I learned was I need to have another person there online besides me because I couldn't do it all myself. I was having like three conversations with people simultaneously. And so beyond that one, I went to a couple of other job fairs. And all of those, I will tell you, I had plenty of conversations with diverse candidates. And, you know, like you do in any job fair, the people that you interact with, they're like, oh, yeah, I'm going to apply, I'm going to apply, I'm going to apply. And what I learned is, is I don't know that many of the diverse candidates did apply. And what I need to do a better job of is coming up with a system to follow up with all those people and make sure and at least prod them and get on them to say, we still want you here, please apply. And so that was a learning experience for me. And I'll talk a little bit more about this in a little bit. But we also need to do, you know, traditionally in Batavia, I've had people the last, I don't know, five to seven years say, hey, Steve, is the job shortage really impacting Batavia? And my honest answer has always been, no, it's not really affecting us that much. We have tons of applicants. Well, I can officially say that those days, for the most part, are over. And instead of us having just people come to us, which was, has been a very nice thing to have, we have to shift how we do this. And we have to actually market BPS 101 to our diverse populations and also to all populations. Because, again, our candidate pool was really much smaller this year than I've ever seen it. And we have to change the game a little bit with a marketing plan where we have to talk about what BPS 101 is all about and why different prospective employees should come here. And really just market it. And so we're gonna, I've already talked with Holly a little bit about that, and we may need some professional help to set things up. We're already taking like baby steps. If you, you don't need to do this right now, but if you look at our Human Resources webpage, we've already made it a little bit more user-friendly. And we will continue that, and we have some ideas to improve that. And so definitely some lessons learned to increase that diverse candidate pool. And I think there's a few strategies that I can do and we can do as a school system. And I'm going to rely on some others because I believe that one of our marketing approaches, we need to have real staff members of all different, in all different positions, do testimonials about like, what is it like to work here? And so like, we'll be needing definitely some help from our current employees. With our hard-to-fill positions, again, hard-to-fill, you know, I said a little bit about that, especially the specialized student services and parapros. You know, our state has recognized this. This is not a Batavia problem. This is a statewide problem. The ISBE has made it easier to get your teaching license with all sorts of short-term applications. And even the parapro license, just in the last month, it's become far easier for people to get that license. They've pulled back some of the restrictions. And so, again, I believe we need to market that better to the people in our community in order to get a better support there. Our local pipeline, I think, will help. Another approach that we're going to take is we have a handful of student teachers that are working this fall in all of our buildings. And we have plenty, we have, again, some staff that are special ed and some of our other hard-to-fill positions. And what we really need to do is get those people engaged at BPS 101 and then actually get them working here potentially in the second semester. Because undoubtedly, every year, we have openings that we can't foresee right now, but we have places for them. And so that's something we're going to work on, too. And then again, as I spoke earlier, when I was addressing, talking about increasing our diverse candidate pool and our, the diversity of our staff, we have to market better. So, you know, we will, a lot of this is, you try things, see if it works, improve it, stop doing the things maybe that didn't work, do more of the things that may have worked. All of these challenges are questions that, I have a very close relationship with my colleagues in King County. And I don't care if you work in Elgin, Burlington, West Aurora, East Aurora, you know, Geneva, Caneland, St. Charles, Batavia. These challenges are very real for all of us. And we just need to continue to do our best to take on these challenges. So kind of in conclusion, I'm very proud of the work that our staff did specifically in the area of special ed and student services at the end of the summer when we had several resignations that were very shocking at the end, you know, end of July, early August. And I'm really, really proud of the time that our special ed team put in to not only get candidates. I always meet with every single new staff member who's a full-time staff member. And the quality of these candidates were exceptional despite the late hour. And so I think that, you know, we've heard some negative feedback at times about our hiring practices. And of course, we can get better and we can do things to improve. But I'm very proud of the work our principals and our special ed staff specifically did to get our people, again, not only getting people to be teachers, but really qualified, solid candidates to work with these special populations with very late notice. We definitely need to shift our strategy, as I've spoken about. And really market how great it is to work here in BPS 101 and have our own people tell some of that story in order to get order to get the right people applying here. You know, I've Todd Swanson was mentioned earlier, and I've had conversations with our our association leadership. We're going to be entering our bargaining season here in January, February, as the current contract expires on June 30, 2023. And they know that we have, we probably have a shared interest, to use some of our our interest based bargaining terminology, to to figure out ways to make it to improve ways to get our new staff in. And because we've had, we've struggled getting our our new hires in and nurses specifically this summer because our pay scale for new people hasn't been as competitive as it should be. And so we have some work to do there. And then, again, diversifying our candidate pool, which ultimately leads to diversifying our staff and our workforce, is an important priority. So that's kind of my report. I'm certainly available here if people have questions or want to continue the conversation.
I first want to say welcome to all the new hires at BPS 101. We're excited to have you as part of the team. And I also want to say thank you, Steve, for your candor in acknowledging that it's a different world, there's different challenges, and if we want to attract the best, the brightest, diverse candidates and just fill positions almost, we have to change things up and we have to examine how we're doing things and how we can better position ourselves to be competitive. So I think that's the first step to making a correction to be competitive in the future. So thank you for that. And then, just for the audience, if you could just talk a little bit, you talked a lot about how we're short with paraprofessionals, if you could just talk about who they are, what they do, and how we're that was your question? Sorry, I wasn't shooting. And how we're managing that shortage within our building?
Yeah, paraprofessionals are a vital, I mean, every staff member that works in a school district has an important responsibility to support our students and their learning, right? Paraprofessionals are a vital component because oftentimes they're paired or working with some of our most high need students who need those supports, whether it's written into their IEP or whether it's just something that is a need in order to have provide proper educational equity for these students. And so paraprofessionals in in our school system, they they can be as close as like a one on one support where you're spending a significant amount of time just with one child, or they can have responsibilities for several students out in a general ed classroom, or they can have responsibilities in a self contained classroom to support the kids. And oftentimes, if you have spoken with a parent of a of a student who has paraprofessional supports written into their IEP, there's a very, very close bond that is built between that child, the paraprofessional, and that family. And so I would never want to underestimate the importance of people who fulfill those roles and how vital they are for for our students. And and what is also interesting to me, and you see this all the time, is that you'll see paraprofessionals that definitely have certain students that they may be responsible for, but if you go into a classroom, you'll see that these parapros are there to support all kids. And so it's a it's a hugely vital position. And, you know, there's a lot of debate, and rightfully so, about parapro compensation and things like that. As my little commercial for the thousands of people who are watching this live, I would just like to share that BPS 101 is a good place to work. Our pay for parapros is competitive. And something that, again, I think we have to get the word out about is that, and members who have been on our board for for a while will know this, several years ago and several contract contract bargains ago with our paraprofessionals and our whole BESPA staff, we were struggling to maintain staff members because the board only paid, I believe, 35%? Do I have that right, Tony? Of the family health insurance? And we bargained it where now our board pays 80% of family life insurance, and the individual is only responsible for 20%. And if you actually take the HSA, it's 85% board paid and 15% paid by 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 the individual for the family. And I can't speak for all school districts, I can't speak for Target, I can't speak for supermarkets or other places where people are seeking out jobs. But we have great insurance and family insurance is very affordable for all of our staff members. And I appreciate the work that Tony and his insurance committee team has done that to make that possible. The paraprofessional job is nice for some people because it's a school year job. You get summers, you get spring break, you get winter break, you get paid holidays, and you work a school schedule, which can be very nice for people who have school age children. So there's a lot of positives to being a parapro here. I know that the bond between parent, excuse me, parapro and the teaching staff that work closely with them is incredible. Again, they're like family. And so, you know, we would, we would love to have you and reach out to us if you're interested. It's funny you asked that question about that because, see, I can talk forever about this stuff. Be careful if you ask a question.
Clearly.
Go ahead.
Could you explain the requirements to be a parapro, maybe? Because I don't think people understand, like, do you need an advanced degree?
You do not need an advanced degree.
I know you mentioned something about licensure. So there's people out there that might be looking for a job, but do you need?
Yes.
Or I'm going to say, if they were interested and wanted to know, would you be able to walk them through the process?
We can walk them through, yeah. I'll tell you that Becca and Michelle, who are HR coordinators, they I hear them all the time on the telephones, walking people step by step to get through. And and the state has made it a lot easier from the standpoint of requirements and things like that in order to be a parapro. So please reach out to us and we'll help you. We'd love to. And I would say the same for substitute teachers.
I was gonna, that was my next question.
Which we'll we'll talk about that a little bit.
Is there a is there a concern about retaining your current paraprofessionals? If we're short staffed right now, I imagine stress is raised for them?
Yeah, and you know, it's interesting, it's a parapro positions, again, and this isn't just a Batavia thing, this is across a lot of school districts, is a pretty high turnover position. I looked back at the 2019 staffing report for our comparisons, and I didn't go further than that, but that was the last time we had a pre pandemic like normal summer. And that's why I chose that. And in that August, we hired, and I could have this off by a couple of people, but we hired probably 17 or 18 parapros in that August. This year, we haven't hired that many, but that is a typical, it's a it's a higher turnover position than some. And it's very typical for us, pre this, how the game has changed a little bit and things have changed, that we would hire a lot of people in in August. And I don't know if I mentioned this along with that, we also had in 2019, and I don't know if it plays out real well in that in that comparison chart, but we pretty much had the majority of our licensed staff positions filled by June, maybe into early July. And again, that's really shifted. And so it was more of a typical fact back in those days, RJ, that we would hire more of our paraprofessionals in late July, early August. And it's interesting, too, something that has changed in those days, there were oftentimes parapros who were being hired because they didn't get a teaching job and they wanted to build a relationship and work in a school system.
God, I forgot about that.
We don't see nearly as much of that because of the teacher shortage. And so there are incredible number of factors that impact all of this. And I, you know, I do a lot of reading about retention and things like that. And pretty much, whether it's business, education, and all kinds of different jobs, really the number one thing that keeps people at work is if they feel like they're making impact, they're engaged, they feel like the work they put in is making a difference. And so perhaps you could make the argument, or at least this should be an area of focus of, you know, there is an onus on all of us to make sure that people are happy, are engaged, and feel like they're making a difference in their day to day jobs. And I would say specifically, I think it's been really hard, you talk to any educator or any staff member who's worked in the school system in the last few years, that's been really challenging for all of us for a variety of reasons. And so this is just a very general statement, but I've been in several of several of our schools in the last couple, you know, week and a half since we've opened, I've had informal conversations with a number of staff. And everybody I've talked to is telling me like, the vibe is different, they're feeling different, they're feeling like it's better. And I'm excited about that. And I'm hopeful, from like a workforce standpoint, that we can capitalize on some of that because that's a really important thing in in keeping people and retaining people. Those are the difference makers. It's that culture, the engagement, the relationships, and making a difference that really makes a difference.
Any other questions for Steve?
Yeah, I have a question for Steve, and then I have a question for the board. Question for Steve, are we doing anything to track our success or failure as far as attracting applicants, attracting diverse applicants, figuring out whether or not we're making progress, making our staff more diverse? Are we actually tracking data, figuring out whether or not we're making progress and adjusting if we aren't or increasing?
Yeah, it's a good question. It's it's kind of challenging at times because people self report their diversity. And so when when people, so it's it and that's when we hire them. But in the application process, no one, we're not allowed to legally to do all those things. And so, you know, I would say that in in tracking it, so tracking it becomes very challenging. I don't think we're making great strides. What I would like to do, to your point, and I spoke briefly about this, is in this, I can take responsibility for this because of my my role and my position, is I need to do a better job, again, when I interact, because I interact with them, plenty of of diverse staff, potential staff members, I need to do a better job of tracking and following up with them, meaning, did they really apply? Right? Because if you talk to our principals, they all want to, they all want to hire, they want to have the diversity that their students represent represented in the buildings. They they all want to do that. And the constant problem that I hear from them is that they just have trouble finding any diverse candidates, at least at first look from paper, to even be a part of the interview process. And so I guess, Chris, what I can tell you is that next year, I will have at least some data on how many diverse candidates that I've had the opportunity to interact with or my team has had the opportunity to interact with, and if that made a difference in, did they actually apply and be a part of our candidate pool? Because that is our biggest problem that I that I can see with that challenge that you're bringing up. So I hope that answers or at least makes a little bit of sense.
The other part of that, if I could just interject, as you said, the candidates self identify their diversity and we want.
Actually, the candidates don't even do that. It's when we hire them, they do that.
Right. But even at that point, they don't have the option to identify all of the different types of diversity that they're on. And all of those different types of diversity are representative of our students. So I just want to put that out there as well.
That is an excellent point because diversity is not always visible.
That's right. Exactly. It's challenging.
I know that some people were getting concerned because they saw a picture, and the picture doesn't necessarily represent what the diversity is. So that's why we need to ask these questions. And the question that I have for the board is, it has come to my attention that this isn't a goal of ours to increase the diversity of our staff. However, we have mentioned in the equity page that it is, we are committed to change. And I know that we, when the strategic planning team did their work, they mentioned that that was something that was of concern to them. Do we want to, as a board, make it a higher priority, provide more resources, whatever it is that we want to do to enable Steve to do a better job of being able to attract candidates in general, but also specifically diverse candidates to make our staff more representative of our student body?
So I'm going to ask the question, and this is more of a dialogue than anything else. Steve is seemingly already committed to trying to meet that goal, meet a goal of his own, because he recognized the importance with the staff and the students and everything else. So what is the benefit of the board saying that that is a goal that we want to, like, state? I'm just asking, it's up to everybody, right?
Well, I mean, I personally think that if the board specifies specific goals that we're trying to attain, it makes it easier to track and figure out whether or not we're actually accomplishing them or going further away from them.
Okay.
I think with any goal, it's important that they be SMART goals. And given the dialogue that we just had with Steve about how we're facing challenges with staffing it at all, just due to a shortage, I don't know that it would fit the achievable category at this point. And although it is good and Steve recognizes it, I don't know that it should be a formal goal because I don't know how achievable it is.
Can I get you to define SMART goal?
Yeah.
I'm sure people understand what that means.
Okay. So SMART goal, timely, achievable, measurable, and?
You're close enough.
Specific.
Specific, thank you. Thank you.
I can't remember my.
So it could be a SMART goal, but it just depends on what it is. Because you can't say, hire this many people by this time, but you can say, attend this many job fairs, you know, the other aspects towards it that would lead you to believe that you're moving towards that diverse.
Here's a question. Chris, would you be comfortable if Steve came to us with some goals that would allow him to do the job that he also needs to do, but also like specifically in response to this, like, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do this? And then, again, like he said, he can report back because he's going to start collecting that data? Like, would you be comfortable with Steve sort of saying, this is what I can do?
Yeah, I think the important.
Yeah, and this is what I need.
Yeah, I think the important thing is that we actually have something that is trackable so that we can actually hold them accountable to say whether or not we're making progress, so that we have shared expectations and we all know where we're going or where we're trying to go.
So question just of procedure, what's the difference? Do we have to have a goal to have a charge? Could the board have a charge as a request to go do that thing without establishing it as its own subset of a goal of the goal we kind of already have?
I kind of love that. I like the charge idea better.
So one of what Chris mentioned was, when we did the strategic plan check in report, we collected all that data, including the Equity Journey Continuum, which does show, you know, the the statistics that you're looking for. And we gave all of the data to stakeholders, staff, students, and community members, and they identified a lot of areas for improvement. They they lumped them, Ming facilitated this, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, they lumped them into eight different categories. And those are all important things that we need to address. It was just the timing of it. And I know the equity team is addressing the first two. And then the they actually went through an activity where they ranked the priorities to try to figure out, let's do ones that are within our control right now. So they have listed that as the, it's not that it's not a priority, but it's number five out of the different things that they selected. So it is identified as something to get to. And I guess the speed of that is on you, but there are two priorities that they identified before that one that we should make sure that we consider as well, related to the diversity, equity, and inclusion.
So I guess the question is, is that something that the equity team has to take on themselves or is it something else that?
I think it can be two parallel things, me personally. I think there could be a charge or a request or however you want to put it, to give Steve the agency to do what he needs to do and maybe to ask for more resources. Because it puts us accountable to being able to support him on that. And then, second of all, and then if there's a way, because I even made a note of it, that Steve could coordinate with the equity team to find out if there's things that maybe they know reasons why people aren't coming to work here that he may not be aware of, or they could facilitate that conversation with the person that applied but didn't, not didn't apply, like he talked to, but they could potentially help follow up. Because they might, someone might be more comfortable talking to a fellow teacher or staff member as opposed to administrator, you know? So I I don't know if I'm ready to like craft it all today, but I think it's something we need to do.
Right. And I didn't expect us to actually come up with a solution today. It was more of, hey, is.
Is this something we want to consider?
Yeah, I would agree. What's the process?
Yeah, I would agree.
Regardless of what you come up with?
You're still doing it.
I'm still going to continue the the journey that we're on and will work to get more candidates in that pool for sure.
And I guess probably, Steve, I kind of feel like in. And I guess probably, Steve, I kind of feel like, correct me if I'm wrong, board members, that there's just a desire for it to be sort of concrete so we have a way to measure what you've done and compare that to, okay, what do we need to do next? And that's why, I don't know if you guys are comfortable with Steve crafting sort of the initial, like, here are the things I'm going to do? And we could assess whether or not we think those are the things we want him to do? And whether we think it's enough or whether we think?
I'd also like a little education, Steve, because you hinted at it on like what you can ask and do and what you can't ask and do. Because that's going to craft some of the data that we can or can't get. So our expectations are-
Realistic.
Realistic. I was going to say managed, but realistic.
Right. So, Steve, when do you think you'd be able to just share out with the board sort of a plan? I mean, I know we won't be hitting super hiring until, until the spring.
I got nothing going on, so.
Well, yeah. That's why I asked. I mean, like, are you thinking like this is a, a winter? Like by winter, you'd have a plan since spring is when we start really hiring?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's fair. It, it shouldn't take that long. I mean, but sure.
Do you'd like some help with the numbers? Tony's really good at crunching.
Well, you talked about some of those things, the recruiting, and that is, needs to be in place by the next hiring season, which starts in April, really.
Yeah. So if you had information for us, board members, would you be comfortable if like January, February, Steve sort of lays out his plan? And then he'll have a chance to work his plan and then he can report back to us again in August? Is that okay?
Makes sense to me.
You comfortable with that?
Sounds great.
All right. Can I ask one more question?
I got two other comments.
Oh, gosh, yes.
You mentioned way back in your comments about the para pay is on par. Do you mean with name ring districts?
I, no, I would, I don't know if it's, it's, it's like, it's in the, like, all of, all of our pain, I'll talk about this in a little bit. You know, our, our, our strong desire is to be competitive, right? And it depends on the school district and things like that. But generally speaking, we're not way off by any stretch of the imagination.
And it's a total compensation package?
Well, and that's why, that's what people need to remember too, is that everyone goes straight to hourly rate. But hourly rate looks a lot different if you're responsible for forty to fifty percent of your insurance premium for a family. So like, it's, and there's a story for us that I don't think we've told very well, that we've worked on with, with Bespa.
Thank you for clarifying.
I got two quick comments. One, I had heard from other people that I work with in school districts talking about people kind of late resignations and like the July, August. And one of the things that, and I'm not suggesting a solution or anything, I just want you to think about it, is one thing I had heard from people is the challenge related to continuity of health, healthcare from one job to the next. And that they wait so that they can get on the new one without falling into Cobra in the middle or anything else like that. So that's one of the challenges I have heard. So I don't know if that's fixable or not, but that's what I had heard. And then, secondly, the- I think that's it. It just lost it. We literally just lost it.
I have another thought.
Yeah, go ahead. Then maybe I'll get there.
We can stay on the topic.
Might give you some time.
We can stay on the topic. Let me think about what I was going to say. It just caught my attention when you said, "We want to be," what was the word you said?
Competitive.
Competitive. When you say "we," who's "we"?
Our school district.
Okay. Is that us as well?
I would think so.
I'm just, I'm just, I don't want to be competitive. I want to be the forerunner. I want to be who everyone's trying to get to. I don't want to be competitive. I'm just putting that out there.
Well, then you better talk with this guy right here about what that looks like.
Well, I know, and that's what I was going to say. I know we're looking at the treasurer reports and I know we're looking at things like that. Obviously, we can't just say, "Here you go, here you go, here you go." But-
I like what you have to say, RJ. But one of the questions that I have too, Steve, is do we know, like, why a paraprofessional works here instead of St. Charles versus Geneva versus West Dorrit? Do we know that? Like, do we have good information on that? Why they work here and maybe, like, how to attract people?
It would only be anecdotal. Typically, typically, people work like in their region for, for positions like this. There's not a ton of people that are going to, like, live in Batavia and drive to Elgin to be a parapro, as an example.
Right.
So it's typically regional. That's anecdotal.
I, I hear what RJ is saying, but I guess one of my questions is, is throwing money at it going to solve our problem? Like, do, like, I'd love to dig in if we can in any way, like you are, you have close ties with your, with your compatriots.
People aren't going to like what I say, but I would say not necessarily. Elgin has a much, maybe not much, they have a higher pay rate for their starting teachers. The last article I saw, they were missing a hundred teachers.
Well, and we, we've seen that with subrates, that we've had lower subrates than many of our surrounding districts, but we've had much higher subfill rates.
Again, right now, we have probably fourteen parapro positions open. When I last checked with my, my other colleagues in King County, they all had more than us. Granted, some of the school districts are larger than us. And, and I think one of the major issues and challenges that we all have, and it's not just education, it's a lot of other places, is there's not the people. We had, just as a data point, since May 1st, we've had a ton of parapro positions posted, right? We've had fourteen applications for elementary parapros. This is since May 1st. That's a long time ago. We had four Rotolo applications filled out and we had one for Batavia High School.
And I think RJ made a good point that we'd like to at least pay competitively so people would rather come and work for us than at Target. And that might be something to examine, you know, but, but I don't know if we can find trends or information or something to find out why do people work and what is it they really want? Right? If it's pay, we can talk about pay. If it's work environment, I mean, at one time it was benefits. And I think you might have made a really good point that we're not selling our story very well.
It's kind of a question that if you talk to anybody in just about any industry right now, it's the question everyone's asking.
Does anyone who had to close their restaurant one day a week because they couldn't get staff?
Do we do exit interviews for people who leave?
We typically do not. And I, I will tell you this. Typically, people communicate with me why they're leaving. So I usually know the story, but I don't take the time to talk through every single why. Generally speaking, in Batavia, and this is a generalization, but typically people leave here because they have an opportunity elsewhere that might be closer to home or is a little bit closer to the city where they may pay a little bit more. Or they, a spouse or a family member has a change and they go elsewhere. So that's been the typical, that's not, but that's not the law. I mean, but that's typically what happens.
Did you think of your question?
I did.
Yay!
Thank you for asking. So, two things. One, one of the things my company started doing to help people remind them, you know, remind staff about, it's not just about the salary, is they put together a total comprehensive compensation report that goes out with everything. I mean, it's like you're, because we went through a little while ago and updated for now. You get dental, where for the longest time my office didn't pay for dental, you know? Because we were looking at our competitors and we realized that we're paying, right? But why aren't people still coming? Well, it's because we were lacking in other elements. So they kind of put that together and it goes out at the last paycheck of the year. The second thing is, I just want to appreciate and state that you, you are recognizing probably a little earlier than most have run into that you got to move from a reactive stance of just fishing in a barrel to a proactive of figuring out why people are leaving. You know, and, and then also why people aren't, you know, and how do you market yourself as a district in an organization? So I appreciate that.
All right. Everyone have other questions? No one has one?
Remember, we can keep going.
I could ask one more.
All right. Thank you, Steve.
He could talk on that.
Yeah, he could talk on that. We've seen it happen, haven't we, Sue? Next item on our agenda is Building Our Future Together. I think Dr.
I will get us started, but we'll all have a chance to chat. And the purpose of this agenda item is to make sure that everyone in the community knows that the board has voted to put a referendum question on the ballot on November 8th. And we had shared with you previously the do's and don'ts. We cannot tell people how to vote and that's not our job. Our job is to say, "Hey, we're asking you your opinion. You go out and vote." But in order to do your due diligence, you do need to learn about our referendum. So your job as a board, our job as a district is to say, "We have information. How can we get that information to our public so that they can make an informed decision on November 8th?" So you can, I know at least one board member has been invited to a PTO meeting because every board member is a liaison and they might think, "Oh, the board will come and speak." And you can always, you should invite Tony or myself or Mark to come as well to talk about Building Our Future Together. But in general, you should really know this very well. You should know the highlights because even though there might not be a very large number of people talking about this right now, it will snowball between now and November. So just be prepared and know that we'll have some new information coming out and when it does, we'll update the website. But in general, you should know the high level, well, you do because you voted. You can probably talk about the referendum question for an hour, but can you talk about it for thirty seconds? Because most people want the thirty-second version. And so, and, you know, what we've been doing as we've started this, Holly and Tony and I have been actively working, mostly Holly, on what that information campaign looks like. She does have a six-page document ready to show you of all of the, it is, everything is timed. She has all of her communications planned between now and November. But we can't just lay them all out today. So she does have a plan in case you're wondering why you haven't seen something. But we have, there have been banners that we put up at the corn boil. Tony and Mark and I are, will do our rounds for all the staff because we know that the community loves their teachers. And a lot of time, they'll say, "Hey, just tell me like, I didn't read everything. Give me the thirty-second version." So we want the teachers to be able to give the thirty-second version. We want you to be able to give the thirty-second version, even though you know the hour-long version of what went behind this referendum question. So we've already done a couple of those meetings. We've met with the heads of the PTOs at the elementary. We do have a BIC meeting coming up in September that we'll talk about it again as well. Where we sit on the chamber, we've been to the Park District, we, together, I think we all talked about it at the city council. We have Rotary members, so we're, we're just, we have a comprehensive list of all the ways that we can get this message out. And it's not to sell anything, it's to sell the idea of, "Learn about this and go vote and please tell us what you think." The referendum, on the right-hand column there, if you are going to be talking about it, these are some of our, the big reasons why you decided to put this on the ballot. And that, on the left side then, right in the middle in blue is, this is the sticking point here. We do have a, we're in a really unique opportunity, we have a unique opportunity right now to make some really quality improvements to our schools without raising the bond and interest levy. So we can't say, we're not raising taxes because every year our operating funds do go up a little bit. And it also depends on the value of your home. We can't predict people's tax bills, but we can tell you, we will not be raising the bond and interest tax levy, which is an important part of your tax bill when you look at the school district. And we, the bond market is changing, construction costs are changing. So we don't have the exact detailed design of every project we would do. That will come at a later time. But we do know that the ballot question includes replacing HC Storm and Louise White Elementary Schools. We would replace those buildings and tear down the other ones. And we wouldn't move locations. They would still be somewhere at that site. So those are some of the highlights. There are projects in every building that you don't have to memorize, but you can direct people back to the website, which we will update, you know, as things come more into focus with that. And I, that's what I wanted to share for this report. And I would open it up to you guys for questions or comments, or Holly and, I'd invite Holly and Tony to chime in as well for anything that I missed.
Only thing I'm going to say, and I've seen it more lately, because for those that don't know, I'm in the architecture business and I don't put things out to bid. And one of the challenges everybody's seen as of late is, you know, pinning down, like, what the exact cost of construction is because of fuel costs, supply chain issues. Like even, like, one of the things, as an example, like if you want a generator or switchgear, you're going to wait fifty-six weeks to get it. Period. Or you could pay twenty-five thousand dollars more and shave about twenty weeks off of it, but those are the challenges. But on the other side, from what I understand, and Tony, you can confirm it, is, is that's construction prices squishing you on this side, but then you're also looking at bond rates that are potentially going up. So I, I kind of personally want people to understand that that's why it's not like a, "Here's the precise list of things we're doing." We're only asking for a certain amount of money, not the things to be done. You know? Because if we go with the things to be done, we might not be able to afford it. So what we're trying to do is say, "We're going to evaluate it and it won't even be, you know, us. It'll be the staff members and the teachers and others and administrators that'll make the decision as to what needs to go out as well as our architects as a part of that process."
You're very cheery. It's like hearing from Tony.
Hey, I've just, I've been on his committee for a while, so it kind of rubbed off.
You're welcome.
Anything else? I know we've been talking about this for a long time. So this, I love the one-pager. That's just really concise. That was amazing. I'm assuming, Holly, that was you?
Teamwork.
And consultants.
Okay.
And consultants.
Yeah, I think it's great. Any other questions, thoughts, concerns? All right, we are excited. My last day, we're excited.
We're excited to hear from the community.
We're excited to hear from the community. All right, next item on our agenda is the preliminary proposal of building improvements. I'm assuming that's Tony?
Yep. Yeah, that is. And so now, excuse me, now that we have a master facilities plan for our schools and we know how we have a general approach to fund them, we'd like to start tackling some of the higher priority items. As you know well, we've built our elementary schools, the six of them, in sister pairs over the years. The oldest being Alice Gustafson and JB Nelson schools, which were built in nineteen fifty-five and nineteen fifty-seven respectively. Or actually, not, irrespective, in the opposite order. HC Storm and Louise White are newer and they were built in nineteen seventy-eight, but they need more work. Fortunately, we don't have the money that we need to accomplish replacing JB Nelson and Alice Gustafson. It's just, it's not in the cards for us. So it's some kind of decision that we're going to have to make, probably through referendum, ten or fifteen years from now. Is that, will be in these, in the same scenario when it comes to these schools. But they are in need of important safety and security work. And it should start sooner rather than later. And we don't necessarily need to pass a referendum to make that work happen. And so as we mentioned, in July, you'd probably incorporate some of that work into the upcoming budget that you'll adopt here in September in fiscal twenty-three. It would also bleed over into fiscal twenty-four as well, certainly. But we're looking at something at the, on the magnitude of about five or six million dollars total or about two to three million dollars per school to basically make it so that those, the entrances on those schools are secure. Ironically, what we're looking at is moving the main office of those schools exactly to the same spot as where they were when they were built in nineteen fifty-five and nineteen-
Oh, wow.
So the irony isn't lost on us, but that is the best location in terms of, particularly of cost and disruption to other aspects of the school. The work there would not be complete with this, you know, there's a lot more work to do in these schools and this is just the preliminary phases. And if the referendum passes, there would be more work that needs to be done. But this is the stuff that is important, that we've identified as urgent and we want to get started with as soon as realistically possible. So the proposal is preliminary and it's just conceptual as to what will happen in those schools. We're just identifying the areas as, as to where things would be located. Here, we're looking at Alice Gustafson School and its parking lot. And so the area highlighted in red is where we would propose to move the office to. It takes the strain off of the Early Childhood Center, which is on the north side of the building right now, which is where the main office is. At Alice Gustafson, it happens to be secure, but that space was never designed to handle the car traffic and the pedestrian traffic that goes through that area of the building. Worse is the pedestrian, car and bus traffic that goes through that neighborhood is very congested and convoluted. And so we would make some adjustments to the site plan, particularly how traffic flows and put, change how the, the U-shaped kind of car drop-off area moves through the, the site and make traffic come only from the east toward the west so that we wouldn't have traffic crisscrossing each other. So these are, like I said, conceptual. We're working with the city of Batavia. We're working with our architects. We're working with our civil engineers. And then working with our teachers and our, and our neighbors to talk about the impacts of these changes moving forward. But this is the concept. And if, so long as the board approves of the idea, we'll incorporate it into the fiscal twenty-three budget and it will require a commitment in the fiscal twenty-four budget. And then we would move forward with these plans in earnest, ideally bidding them in November because anything later than that would cause- in November because anything later than that would cause us to probably not be able to order all of the things that we need and get all the plans in place to get this stuff done next summer. I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have. Yes, Sue.
The fence that it references?
At Gustafson in particular.
Yeah, Gustafson, that's, that's the first one I looked at. Um, is that the red line or the black line?
That is, it's very hard to see here, but it is the red line. And the rationale behind that fence is just to prevent pedestrian traffic from crossing in that area. It's not intended to actually keep people out, but we don't want.
But because of the traffic?
Yes, we don't want pedestrian, pedestrians crisscrossing traffic and, and at, basically at any point that they choose. We want to control where that happens.
Because the cars will park, because people park on the side of the street where four is, where number four is?
People would still be able to park there.
They park there so you don't want to walk across the, okay, the bus line, okay.
And that main sidewalk, that's, that sidewalk that runs east-west on Carlisle, we don't want people to choose to walk across that lawn and then cross the, the car lane and then walk into another entrance. We want them to follow the sidewalks.
So is one, the primary drop-off, is that going to be car and bus or is bus still going to be on the other side there?
A bus would be on the other side of the building.
Where, okay.
But this may change. Uh, so like I said, it's conceptual and it really depends on what the City of Batavia tells us in terms of what, obviously buses and cars are going through here and how that works and how that fits together is going to be contingent on.
So buses and cars are going through there now.
Yes.
What do you need from us tonight, Tony?
Uh, just a general commitment that we, this is something that you, the board wants to accomplish in the current fiscal year and the next fiscal year and it.
This will actually bleed over into the next conversation that we have about the budget.
Well, I was going to say, and.
Well, you're the one that asked, do we have the money?
Do we have the money?
We'd actually be voting on it at a later point, but you don't want to move ahead until we've all said yes, this is what we're.
Technically, you'll have two opportunities to vote on it. One, when you adopt the budget in September and two, when you approve the bids in November.
But today is effectively to give you some level of comfort to engage the architects and tell them to go do their job.
Exactly.
Which is spending money, just so everybody's aware.
It doesn't work for free?
No.
Architects do not work.
Really? Came up with this.
Our architects and civil engineers.
Okay. Oh, it was DLR?
Yeah.
It's on the corner.
It's right there.
It's too tiny.
I know, you gotta like.
It is tiny, I gotta.
All right, so I guess my question is, we know that this could change, but in, um, in theory, do we support this plan?
If it's for safety, yes.
You do or you do not?
I do, I just, I know what's involved in these and just knowing that the current situation is an environment and where the main office is and how to even get to screening anyone at, like, both of these schools, you've got to basically walk into the middle of the building. Which is like the worst way to handle anybody from a visitor coming into the building.
So to provide more detail on that, and I mentioned it in the report, but essentially what needs to happen is, it's not just a door, that's a secure vestibule, it does include that. Uh, it includes moving where the main office, where the, where mostly the, the school secretary sits, giving them visibility to the rest of the site so that they have situational awareness as to what's happening around the school. Moving the principal's office to be adjacent to that location and then moving the nurse's office, because that must be adjacent to the main office as well. Of course, that creates other dominoes and dynamics that begin to fall throughout the rest of the building, but that's what we're concentrated on in phase one and there'll be other adjustments that will need to be made throughout the rest of the building and moving things around because we're not increasing the building's footprint, we're just moving around what's inside it. And so it's rather complex.
Is this going to take up all of our capital improvement money or?
And then some.
And then some, so. What is the impact if the referendum passes versus if it doesn't pass?
So this is the work that we've identified that must happen.
Oh, right. I mean, I'm just saying, it's going to have a domino effect because we're taking up all of our money that we normally use for maintenance.
And there's still much more that needs to be done in these schools too, to make them usable for the next 10 or 15 years until we make a decision as to what maybe come of these buildings as they age. Yeah.
That's why I'm bringing it up because. We need this for the other two schools.
We have to do this regardless, but it's going to put us in a situation.
I'm saying we need it for four schools if the referendum doesn't pass.
Right.
Because there's security issues at, uh, HC Storm and Louise White.
Yes, there are.
Yeah.
We'll have to figure that out.
Okay.
But we're going to work on, right, for the time being, we'll work on the optimistic assumption that the referendum.
Because we wouldn't pay for that, or we wouldn't approve the payment till after that referendum is voted on, right?
Are you?
No, this would.
This is not associated with the.
This is not associated.
I'm saying, but we wouldn't be voting for final approval until after.
We probably would because the referendum wouldn't be till April.
Or the date you gave?
No referendum.
In November.
I mean, November, but I'm sorry.
The bids would be awarded in the meeting, ideally in the meeting in November.
Yeah.
So we would know.
You probably would know, but I'm.
If the referendum passed, because voting would occur before the November meeting.
Oh, because we'd be, second week in November, you're right.
We would know, but at that point, they're not related, they're not on the same.
No, but I think our just saying that would inform us before we went to the next step.
We would not vote with the results of the referendum on this.
Which may change one's perspective of.
Right, I think that, was that your point, RJ, that we may need to look at.
Aaron's point is, is what we, the assumption that we're operating on is this is the minimum amount of work that needs to be done irrespective of whether or not the referendum passes or not. If the referendum doesn't pass, we're going to have to come up with a Plan B for HC Storm and Louise White.
Yeah.
And we're going to need some time to come up with a Plan B, but right now, we're hoping for Plan A.
I mean, Tony, I had a conversation with you and the way I understand it is, this is of like the highest priority. Because for me personally, as a board member, the one thing that really keeps me up at night is the safety, security of our students, staff and everyone that we're in charge of during that day. And so, um, yes, you know, this is going to maybe put a strain on the budget slightly, but I feel that we're being fiscally responsible with taxpayer money to do this because this is work that needs to be done. We're doing a good job of what we have, we have an opportunity to do much better.
Right.
And I really can't think of anything more important than the security of our community.
I may follow on to that comment, thank you. Two things, one, um, the reason why we ended up hiring DLR to do that master facilities plan is we realized that we could relatively easily build a secure vestibule on Storm and Louise. However, there was so much more work that we knew that needed to be done and so many interdependencies and intricacies that if we went and did that, we would probably tear down a $2 million vestibule within five to seven years and having wasted that kind of money. And we just don't have that kind of money to waste, frankly. And so we needed to have the plan to see how all the pieces fit together before we move forward. We know how to have that plan and that's why we're here talking about this for AGS and JBN. Unfortunately, cost-effective wise, those schools really should be torn down, but they're not on the work that needs to be done there and rebuilt, but that's just not in the cards for us right now. But I would say too, it isn't as though these schools are unsafe. It's not, they're, they're not unsafe places. We would never bring kids to an unsafe place, but the security and, um, especially perimeter security is not ideal in any way, sense or form. And we have to make adjustments to keep it secure and this is just not best practice. And so it's not unsafe, but we can do a lot better. And that's why we're making these improvements.
I agree. You know, Tony, safety has always been a major concern of mine and so I think anything we can do to secure the buildings is a priority.
So we're good, you want to talk about how this impacts our budget next?
I'm ready when you are.
You ready to hear about how it's going to impact our budget, guys?
So this is our opportunity, opportunity for a public hearing, so we do have to declare that we're opening the hearing. I'll give some, um, background on the budget, but then we'll give the public an opportunity to comment or ask questions if, if they choose. So.
I have the verbiage, are we ready?
Yep.
All right, tonight we'll conduct a hearing on the BPS 101 budget. We'll begin the hearing with a brief presentation from CFO Tony Inglacy. After his, excuse me, presentation, the public can comment. There will be no action at tonight's meeting for any of our agenda items.
Just that one.
Yeah. All right, Tony, tell us about the budget.
Right, so in terms of our process, we, the board placed a tentative budget on display at its meeting in July. Uh, this evening, we're conducting the public hearing to hear from members of the community in terms of their concerns or thoughts or questions about the budget. We will adopt the final budget in, in September at the meeting on the 20th. And at last date to adopt a budget for our, for a public school district in Illinois is September 31st. If you wouldn't mind, Holly, if you would open up the tentative budget summary. I have updated this tentative budget summary as of today, so if you looked at it in the prior few days that this agenda item was available, it has changed and I apologize for that, there are a lot of moving pieces with this particular budget. And I want to give you the best information that I have, but it continues to move. Page number, um, five, I believe. It's, is a summary, I keep going, Holly, I'll tell you when to stop. Might be more than five. Keep going. We're going to go right to the numbers, which intimidates many folks. Keep going, one more page, I believe, right here.
Oh, those numbers, okay.
So I'll take a little different approach here in explaining the budget. If you'd scroll up and just load that up as best you could, I'd appreciate it. Um, this is a total summary of the fiscal '23 budget, both in terms of operating funds and non-operating funds. What are operating funds? Operating funds include the education fund, the operations and maintenance fund, the transportation fund, uh, the IMRF retirement fund and the working cash fund. And those that group together is what our district needs to operate on a daily basis. There are non-operating funds, which includes our debt service fund, which pays kind of our mortgage, if you will, kind of our, and our debt, and then our capital projects fund. We move money every year, our practice is to move money from some of our operating funds to our capital projects fund because a lot of our capital projects span multiple fiscal years or they are in, occur in the summertime, which depending on when a contractor bills us may fall in one fiscal year or the next and make, can make our budget look like we're spending more or in deficit in a given year or excessive surplus. And so that's why we make these distinctions and move that money over to the. Now, in the operating fund, at present, this current version of the budget, we're showing a surplus of $170,000, which out of $120 million is not much, is a razor-thin margin for a surplus. And so I do anticipate that we will have a surplus at the end of this fiscal year, but a lot has to go right for that to happen. We are showing at present an almost $1 million surplus in the non-operating funds. And the primary reason for that is all, not all of the money that we're transferring over to capital projects or spending out of capital projects in the, in this fiscal year will be spent because I don't know exactly, if we do this work at JB Nelson and Alice Gustafson, I don't know exactly when we'll get the bills for that work, but we have to have the money there to pay them so that we can pay it when the time comes. So, it's really close. We're moving about $4 million out of our operating funds and into our non-operating funds so that we can pay for this project if this is what the board chooses to do. There's a lot going on in this budget. Salaries are going up, um, not as much as you would otherwise expect. We are hiring a lot of newer staff that make less, so it's pulling down some of those averages. It, it's a kind of a holdover from the pandemic, a lot of positions went unfilled during the pandemic and now that we're actually filling them, we still have vacancies, but now that we are filling them, it's pulling down some of the, the salary increases in terms of its averages. Benefits are doing well, our new benefits plan is being, is contained and is, is much less than inflation, so we're seeing, we're reaping those benefits. However, we rely very heavily on purchase services, contractual services, we outsource custodial, we outsource transportation, we outsource food service, and those are seeing massive increases as you would expect in this economy. Everything is increasing in excess of our revenue. New revenue is coming in at 5%, I anticipate to come in at 5% this year. Expenses are going up 8.7% as of today. So we are spending more this year than we're taking in and that is a dangerous position to be in over time and so we must be careful. I'm, I'm saying that the sky's falling here, but we just need to be prudent with our finances and we always do. Um, and we've got some additional pressures that we're not accustomed to. I think that's about it when it comes to the budget, unless there are any specific questions that you would like me to answer. Oh, a couple of other things. Sorry, I'm running off the top of my head.
He's like Steve, he's talking about this all night.
Enrollment, yeah. Enrollment, we have more students at present enrolled in our schools than we would have otherwise anticipated. So our enrollment trends are, have been going down for the last probably eight years and we would have expected to have about 5,150 students here this year. In fact, we have about 5,250. And so, more than, than we would otherwise expect, which is good. As you well know, birth rates continue to decline, not just in Illinois and the King, in the collar counties, but nationwide. It's an issue, declining enrollments are an issue in schools nationwide and will continue to be an issue. So we have more folks moving into town than we have, than, that are moving out at present, which is good news, but the birth rates can, will continue to decline. We graduated last spring about 550 seniors and in this incoming kindergarten class is about 325, so there's a big difference between seniors who are graduating and kindergartners coming in. And our, uh, staffing is staying roughly nor, uh, the same as it was in the prior year, down about 1.9 FTE. And so that's good news for class sizes in general, although there are class size issues around the district and there always will be depending on where, how old kids are and what neighborhood they live in. But class sizes have, on average, have never been smaller in Batavia. So that's good news. And that, now I'm done.
All right, do board members have any questions for Tony?
With that enrollment decline, is it just, it declined less than expected or was it actually a bump up?
It declined less than expected and it's close to a bump up.
Okay.
It's close.
Which kind of just highlights that the enrollment is really kind of like reading tea leaves.
Yes.
You know?
The good news is my projections have never been more wrong on enrollment in, in the positive direction.
Congratulations.
Tony, uh, one of the numbers that stood out to me, you said revenues, um, are increasing five percent, expenditures eight point one, but you said, we're not saying the sky is falling, so why do you say that? Because the, to, you know, common person, well, you're not taking in as much as your expenses go up, that's not the right trend, but there could be some factors that could change in the future that.
Right. So as we, the board was talking earlier about hiring and then making sure that we remain competitive and have salaries that are attractive to employees, or potential employees. When we do that, we need to make sure that, uh, we can sustain those salaries over time. And the challenge there is, it might work in a given year and it, and it could work this year, uh, but being able to sustain that or with the expected revenue that we're going to get in two, three, four, or five years, it has to remain within that band, otherwise we'll be forced, due to money reasons, to lay people off because we just won't have the staff here to do so. Now, the cushion that we're assuming in our financial projections is that with our declining enrollment, we can theoretically reduce the amount of staff that are available because we, if we don't have as many kids, we shouldn't need as many teachers. The challenge is, is that's never really worked for us. We should have eight fewer FTE in this fiscal year than we did last year based on enrollment, although it's higher than we otherwise anticipated. But we only have negative 1.9, so, um.
Tony reminds Brad and I of this all the time.
This is, we talk about this constantly, we do, yes. Uh, and so, and if we're not careful, we could put ourselves in a more precarious position, especially with the pressure that we see to increase wages. So we just need to be mindful of that. And I'm not saying that we can't do things or that we should do things, but it's going to take active management and prudent action so that we live within our means. And we need to take care of our schools too, as, as Chris has been saying for years and years, serving on the Capital Projects Committee, we need more money to actually take care of our buildings, yet we need more money to hire the right staff, we need more money to make sure that kids are getting the best instruction that we can possible, but all this stuff comes to roost at once. We want to have small class sizes too, but you're juggling 17 different priorities that all compete with each other simultaneously.
It's just like your house, you're making the same amount of money, but cost of living is going up.
All right, any other questions, comments from board members? Is there anybody from the public who'd like to comment or, on the presentation, the budget[1713.42] Is there anybody from the public who'd like to comment or, on the presentation, the budget presentation?
Thanks, Tony.
You got a thumbs up from Ming. Thanks, Ming. All right. Next item on our agenda is, um, our action items. The first action item is the approval of the transportation contract amendment. Again, Tony.
And so, as I said, we rely very heavily on purchase services and service contracts to provide, um, our support services to students. To remain competitive for bus drivers, uh, first student who provides our, uh, regular education transportation services for the school district has requested, uh, an increase in their contract. Essentially, it's a three-year contract. We are currently in the second year, and they would like to implement the third years or rates, so that they can increase the starting wages for bus drivers and attract more bus drivers. Last year was not a good year for bus drivers and having buses arrive to school on time. Luckily, we have almost as many drivers as we need to have right now with our current routes, and we want to keep it that way, so that we remain competitive. And so we're recommending that we increase these rates to the year three, uh, and that will cost the Board of Education about forty thousand dollars more than they would have otherwise expected.
Questions for Tony on the transportation contract?
You, you said that it wasn't a good year for buses. How does the rates help that? Is it more bus drivers? Is it, you know, how does that help offset that concern?
More bus drivers, essentially, at the end of the day.
Better planned routes, because you have more options, that sort of stuff, potentially.
Right. Yeah, if we don't have enough drivers, or essentially excess drivers, because, you know, there's, somebody's sick every day, calls in sick, and if there aren't, if there isn't a bus driver to actually pick up that route, then, um, that route is often very late, because they have to scramble to make coverage needs work.
Any other questions? All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the contract amendment with first student for regular education, people transportation, and adjust the daily rates as presented.
No move. Second.
Move by Meitzler, second by Locke. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next item on our action agenda is the approval to increase substitute teaching rates. I'm going to hand that over to Steve.
Yeah, I've said plenty tonight. But, um, again, this, the approval we're seeking is to help BPS one oh one, not pay the least in our area, but to be competitive. And I will say that, that I, 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 I came up with a couple of different scenarios for these different rates. I met with Tony to make sure that the budgeting is appropriate, and the finances are there to do this. And, um, we, as we worked on that, we went with the, the best rates that we could. I'm, I'm actually happy, very happy with, uh, the recommendation we're bringing forth, so.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
It's, could be just that I'm getting old. But when did we last do this? I would swear that we just.
Just recently.
Okay, so it's not that.
Last year we did.
We did it last, uh, you approved it last September, for October first.
We're going up again.
Previous to that, we did it in January of twenty nineteen. Previous to that, it was a long time ago.
Okay, because it seems like we're doing it more often.
Yeah, we're, we're in the midst of what you, you could call it an arms race. I, I, I have a meeting tomorrow with my King County HR colleagues, and it won't shock me if one of them chimes in and says, well, we're raising our subrates again. And I'll be saying, yes, we are too, hopefully.
No, I, I just.
But yeah, it's, it's.
I don't want to say we go higher even, but it just seems like, are we doing this all the time?
The market has changed and shifted.
It is what it is, so.
Any other questions?
You know, I'm like, I thought we just did the, you know?
We did.
Okay.
Eleven months ago.
How do we come to these numbers?
They're based on comparatives with, uh, Mike, again, uh, I'm really lucky. Uh, I have a great team in King County that do the job I do. We're transparent, we're honest, we, we share ideas, we share spreadsheets with numbers, and, uh, this, these numbers all came from comparisons to our Kane, uh.
Because we were, unfortunately substantially lower, substantially, um, than our other districts, right? We raised, and then everyone else.
In some of the categories, yeah.
Yeah. That's what I thought.
Okay.
And some are still higher.
Yeah.
Some are still lower.
And, and, you know, this is just anecdotal, but for somebody who spends her day in a high school building and, um, talks to subs that are there, most of the time what subs say is, they pick a school district or a school that they like, they just don't want to leave ridiculous money on the table, right? So if they can go to school districts over and make a substantially larger amount of money, they'll consider making the change. Most of them don't want to, they just want to make the going rate, in general.
Yeah, I don't think five, ten dollars is going to make a difference, yeah.
So, uh, if no one has any other questions, I would entertain a motion to increase the pay rates as presented.
Still moved.
Second.
Move by Locke, second by Meadows, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, tell us about nurses, Steve.
Similarly, we were turned down many times, um, and many times, and I'm not exaggerating that at all. We were very concerned we weren't going to find nurses. We, we scrambled, and, uh, again, the, uh, Brad V, Brad two, worked tirelessly over the months of July and August to find folks, and we, we've gotten there. But we are significantly lower than where we should be in the current market for these positions. This impacts not a ton of people, um, but it's the right thing to do to keep us competitive. And I think that the world has seen how important, uh, the registered nurse position is in our school buildings. I, uh, got to see our, um, one of our new hot, new nurses in action on the very first day of school, and she was absolutely fantastic. And so this is a good faith effort to, uh, pay them the right, the, the correct wage. Uh, again, staying competitive.
Questions? We heard Tony, or Steve talk a lot tonight, so he's pre-sold us. I would entertain a motion to approve the rate increase as presented.
Still moved.
Second.
Move by Locke, second by Meadows, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I do have a quick question on that, that has nothing to do.
Sure.
Do we know why we had such a strong turnover with the nursing staff?
Uh, we have not had a ton of turnover in that department. Some people moved, some people retired. It was kind of like the perfect storm. School nursing looks different than it did, or at least the last two and a half years, has looked a lot different than it did preceding that, um, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Last item on our agenda is approval of the Equity Team Consultant. I'm going to hand that over to Dr. Hitchens.
And I'm going to hand it over to Ming Shelby.
This is a really exciting part of the night. Um, so there's three updates from the Equity Committee, and the first one is that, um, we met several times over the summer, and one of the tasks that the committee, um, wanted to focus on was the welcome and inclusive environment and crafting that safe space messaging to not only staff, but also to students. So I have some cute props here that are displayed in our elementary schools, um, and these were designed by our student intern, um, but the, uh, message and the vision behind it was with Equity Team. And then here's one of our secondary schools, and you'll notice there's a QR code that goes straight, straight to Student Resources. So that's one thing that the team worked on. The second is that implicit bias training is something that the team felt that they really wanted to focus on. And so on September second, Sheri Jones from the IEA will be leading two breakout sessions, um, with our, with our staff. Um, and what's really great is that it's not just our certified staff, but all staff are invited. Our campus monitors, peer professionals, everybody are welcome to be a part of this event. Um, and then the Equity Team also met with Sheri Jones over the summer to discuss what are some pre-activities, some post-activities that we need to complete to make sure that we're ready to go and prepared for Sheri. And then our final one is that, um, we interviewed four consultants to help us with our Equity Action Plan, and it was unanimously decided that Dr. Rakita Leaks, um, would be the person that would help us with this charge, and the team overall felt really, really excited, um, for, to meet with her and help us continue this really great work. And one of our members is in the audience today, Kara Schuster, um, and she was a really big part of the summer as well. So that's the quick update. Talked way less than Steve and Tony.
You did. Thank you, Ming. Any question for Ming? All right, thanks for coming, Kara. Um, I would entertain a motion to, um, I'm sorry, I lost track of. To approve Dr. Rakita Leaks of Unlimited Opportunities LLC to consult with the Equity Team in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Still moved.
Second.
Move by Meitzler, second by, was that you, RJ?
Yep.
Sorry. Uh, all in favor?
I agree.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. Thank you guys so much. Lots of good stuff on this agenda tonight, um, and lots of really good discussion, so that's really awesome. Uh, we'll go next to administration comments.
Great, I have several. First, back in August, we had a special meeting to discuss board communications. Um, and I know that meeting was definitely needed. There's many people, the community, staff, board, that sometimes get frustrated with communications. A lot can go wrong, um, including, like, you want transparency, and you want to be able to connect with the community. So, um, we decided to sit together and meet and try to problem solve. And from your perspective, what I heard at the meeting is you guys really want transparency. You need to follow the Open Meetings Act, which brings some challenges to communications. You need to follow your policy, which is very specific about how you communicate with each other and the public. Um, and you definitely also want people's problems to be solved, and you want people to be heard. Um, and there's that desire to follow the chain of command, so that people could get their problem solved in the place that they should be solved. At our workshop, we identified issues related to communications. We talked about, um, concerns that people have shared, and some of the emails that you've gotten. We shared our frustrations as well. I know something positive will definitely come out of that meeting. For example, um, we decided that we would like somebody to facilitate future sessions, so I'm going to pass these out, not now, because as a former teacher, I know that if I pass this out, you'll read it. But I'm even sending you, giving you a pen, because what we heard, what we decided after this meeting is, this is a hot topic, and we need somebody here who has the expertise. So the Illinois Association of School Boards could help you, your attorney can help you, or Luda, as a statewide organization, could also come in and facilitate it, but I started with IESB. So I have Laura Martinez as your representative, and she's a parent in the district, so how great is that? So I, there's four dates here that you're going to tell me whether or not you can make them, and what time you can start, and then I'll see if magic happens and we're all able to pick the same night. Also in the packet that I'm going to hand out is, we talked through, like, what happens when an individual contacts you? What happens when somebody emails you? What happens when somebody comes and speaks at public comment? How do you respond to that? Because it's in your policy, and it is the, you know, that you don't engage with people during public comment, and that's not because we don't care about them, but that is policy. And so we need to all be on the same page with that. And so what happens if, um, somebody sends an email to the entire board? Who's going to reply, that kind of thing? So we wrote this with the help of the attorney. He looked at it, he, he advised us on it, we wrote it, he looked at it again. So you're going to see a couple, three comments in pink that he added, but other than that, attorney approved here. And so the, those are some of the positive things that have come out of that, not, um, you know, knowing that we're, we're all on the same page as far as wanting to be heard and wanting to really hear what people are saying and, and make sure that they know that their opinion matters. And then, all right, my next comments are about the, see, I talked too long, my computer shut down. That's the theme of the night. Got to log back in. No offense, Steve. We're all picking on Steve. Yeah, I know, I know. You just put those there, Steve's going to help me pass up. So I wanted to talk about the back to school this year. It has been an amazing year. I have my caps lock on. That's the thing. It has been an amazing year so far, and I'm not just saying that in ten years, I have not felt the energy Steve talked about, other people are talking about, other superintendents are talking about it, but let's talk about here in Batavia. I get the, the best part about being a superintendent, and I know it's really hard to be a board member, because you don't get to get out. I get to go to all the schools. So for sure, on the first day and last day, I put my schedule together, and I wear comfortable shoes, and I go visit every school on the first and last day, just to, just make sure everybody's where they need to be, and it was great. And then I obviously visit in between. Um, and so I have been asking teachers, I've been asking students, how's everything going? I've met, Tony and I met with the PTO, um, officers, we're asking them, asking, and it has been amazing. We had a meeting with all of the district administrators, a Zoom meeting today, and we asked them, how can we do better? And all of these things that I'm hearing, I, buses are mostly on time. Buses are never a hundred percent on time, but almost, like, there were, there were almost as little issues as you can related to buses. I'm hearing the words calm, everything's so calm, that's what I'm hearing. So I've been writing down some words that I'm hearing, smooth. I heard sunshine and rainbows, everything is sunshine and rainbows. And then a lot, another theme is that students, I don't know if you know this, but they take a little while to get back into the groove of learning when they've been home for the summer, and everybody's commenting on how it's happening quicker this year than it has, obviously, the last two years, but even in prior years. So people are talking about kids being in the groove, and students being in the groove a lot sooner than usual. And as a matter of fact, I was in a first grade room just, um, yesterday, and they were all, first grade, they were all counting, and it was like music to my ears. I just went in, they were so happy, they were counting to a hundred and, eighty-five yesterday, but then they were bragging that they had counted out loud together in, in a chorus to a hundred and twenty. And this is on, like, day five of school, they're counting to one twen, a hundred and twenty, they were so happy. I know, that's their target, I know, but it was just, they were so proud. So thank you to the teachers and the student services staff, nurses, peer professionals, campus monitors, administrators, everybody who's there with the kids every day, it makes a difference. And then for the twelve-month staff, um, buildings and grounds, the buildings look great. Business office, they continue to get people paid, despite the new people, Josh is here, we're still getting our bills paid and people paid. That's amazing. Technology, thank you so much. Kids have what they need, teachers have what they need. And then let's talk about Cindy and the Rjack staff, who have registered a hundred and forty-six new students. That's not even kindergarten and preschool. So kindergarten and preschool, we had to register all of them, and on top of that, a hundred and forty-six new families, so thank you.
Wow.
If you stop by this summer, she was never alone, she always had many friends, many friends, many in the lobby. And then we all take turns covering Cindy's lunch every day, so all of us, um, have a special, we each get a week, everybody in this building, to be Cindy for an hour, and wow, when she comes back, I'm like, where's Cindy? Is it, is it time yet? Like, phones ringing and.
Very stressful.
Transferring. I don't know how to answer this question, and she just, she does a great job, so does everyone here, helping out to get those families registered. Like Tony said, five thousand two hundred and fifty students, which is actually pretty close to last year, and a lot more than we were expecting. So thank you to, um, everybody that helped make that happen. And now that we are, students supposedly are in the groove, staff are in the groove, so now it's time to recommit to our roles. And this year, um, we're going to talk with all the staff when they come back together for our Districtwide Institute Day on September second, about just hoping everybody reflects on what their role is, and how are you supporting student learning, including the board? What do you do that's supporting student learning? Because they're all ready, so what is it that we're doing? And there is that popular NASA legend, that story that we've heard before about when John F. Kennedy was touring the headquarters in, um, nineteen sixty-one. The story goes that he encountered a custodian mopping the floors late at night when he was getting his behind-the-scenes tours, and he said, why are you work, working so late? And the, the employee responded, Mr. President, I'm helping put a man on the moon. So, um, I know that we're not putting kids on the moon this year, even though, how fun would that be? But we are helping them to prepare for whatever comes their way, and everybody has a role. And I can't wait to continue those conversations with the staff about what is it that you're doing that's helping put our students on the moon. So that is my pep talk for the start of the year, and thank you, everybody to make, who made this a great start. You're welcome.
That was very po, positive.
I know, because that's what's happening in the buildings, I'm just reflecting that.
All right, board member comments, Erin, I'm going to start doing there.
I am wanting to welcome everyone back to a great school year. Lisa and I had a conversation this morning about how this school year just feels different, and it's delightful. And I'm glad everyone's back. This is a very busy time of year, but it's an exciting time of year, and everyone feels just invigorated and fresh. And I'm glad to hear the students are ramping up, um, faster. And I can't help but think that, you know, that might have been one of those hitting COVID blessings. They're just a little bit more agile, so that's it for me.
RJ?
Um, I'm really happy that you're enjoying this, Lisa, your last start of a school year. So I'm really happy to hear, yeah. So, uh, as we know, Lisa's leaving, so, um, I was talking with Lisa, and she said she's not counting down the days. I thought that she would be, so.
No.
I like that you're, you know, you're really busy, so congratulations on such a good start. The other thing, uh, really happy to be back in school. If I could say anything to any parents out, especially new parents, uh, in your schools, please consider volunteering for events. I know you've already seen emails from your PTOs, and you're, and they're not going to stop. They, they need volunteers as much as they can, and even if it's just three hours on one day of the entire school year, it'll go a long way to help them, so that's it.
Thanks, RJ. Go ahead.
I, I just want to say, it struck me the other day, and more as a.
I, I just want to say, it struck me the other day and more as of being on a board member, I'm starting to see like all it takes to like get the beginning of the year to work. I mean, teachers and communications and everything else. And previous to being a board member, I just tried to make sure my kid's alarm went off at the right time so that he got out the door and didn't miss the bus. And then I had to drive him to school, right? That was about the biggest worry I kind of had, you know, as a first start of school. I can see what everybody has to do from like custodial staff. I mean, it's, you make the kind of allegory of the, I'm putting a man on the moon, but it is everybody. You know, there's massive amounts of efforts of waxing the floors and getting furniture moved. And even a little story I had with Mark Anderson talking about, we were marching band stuff, so I'm going to apologize for that eventually. But, you know, we were talking about how we could get that process started. And he was like, oh, do you need this thing? The trailer? And I said, no, not yet. Oh, good. Because it's perfect for us to move desks all over the school district. Because we could just load it right up and get them quickly where they need to be. I'm like, great, perfect. No, I don't need it. You know? So I'm just excited to have everybody kind of, you know, back in the groove faster, feeling positive about things. And so I appreciate you bringing that to us. On the marching band front, I am going to apologize because it's starting to be marching band season and we're in the thick of it. But I want to echo and appreciate your comment about volunteers. It's, you know, I don't know, and I know other groups need a lot of volunteers from sports and otherwise. And, and please get out, even if it's a couple of hours, it helps immensely. And, and, you know, we, it just, we on the marching band with what we're doing this year, we need about 40 volunteers for every competition this year. And just getting people out there for, and that's an eight-hour stint on average. So I mean, it's. Yeah, but we have fun and everything's good. So it's just get out there and find a community.
Started five in the morning, too.
Nah, some days, some days. Yeah, no, we don't do that. But it's a lot of fun. You get to hang out with kids. You get to, you know, see your kids grow and, and, and become, you know, better versions of themselves. And that's one of the things that I got from being a volunteer. So I want everybody to encourage them to get out there to do that too.
Awesome.
I'm good.
Thanks, Greg.
Mm-hmm.
Have a great year, everybody.
Erin.
I echo what my colleagues have said. I will maybe take the volunteering a different spin. So despite my gray hair, I do have a child that's in grade school. I was at a barbecue talking to some parents that had a second grader and I was asking about their experience. You know, they've been, their kids have been in the COVID area and they have, even if they wanted to, really couldn't engage. And they were saying how it can be a little bit intimidating because, you know, some things never change and you're the new kid at the table. And so I would encourage parents that have been involved and have relationships to reach out to those new faces, to make them feel welcome. We need them. They're the future leaders of our community. And they're kind of thirsting for it right now. So I would ask you to do that. And yeah, I'm just happy to hear that everything's off to a good start. So I'm looking forward to a student-focused year where we can do our important work that needs to be done together with everyone in that room. Well, you want me to talk about that?
Yeah, yeah. You said you were going, this was your idea.
All right, this was my idea. This is, I didn't know if we went along, so you didn't want to talk about it.
No, no, no.
But Lisa talked about the, the moon landing and this was my idea because I love the space program. I'm a little corny, but she's got pins here that have little astronauts in it. And, you know, I've heard that story before about how everyone had a common goal. And for me, really, what tied it together was I had an opportunity this year to participate in commencement as a school board member, up close and personal. And I had to get emotional even thinking about this, is that our students, I mean, that, we had a challenging year. We were talking about a lot of things and students weren't always at the top of the list, in my opinion. And, you know, to be there and listen to these kids speak with eloquence and poise. If you've never been to commencement, it's like a rock concert. They fill up the NIU. I've, I've never spoken to a crowd. And these kids got up there and killed it. And the way they talked about their experience, I remember the last speaker, the gentleman said, you know, we're Bulldogs. I'm getting choked up thinking about that. But, but what that means to me is that unity of purpose. That's what we're here for. That's what everybody in this room and the audience is here for, those kids, those families. And so I wrote this down, but you know, we do, you know, we're not going to the moon, but we do have a mission. And it's on our website and it says, to help students learn and grow in all aspects of their development. We have dedicated ourselves to ensuring that our learning environments are productive, safe, and supportive. And what's encouraging to me is we had a pretty full agenda. I think we touched on every one of those with our agenda, which is encouraging. And then we actually have five strategic goals. And so I know Lisa's talked about this, but, you know, when Kennedy said we're going to go to the moon, that was an impossibility. I mean, we all have more technology in our cell phones and our watches probably than there was in the collective world at that time. And yet they made it happen. And so when you have a goal, you know, they had 400,000 people at one time with the mission to get three men on the moon. We have 350 teachers, 735 staff approximately, working with 500, 5,250 students. So our goal is a little bit more manageable. But these are our goals. And I feel like for me, with these lapel pins represented every day getting up and working on these goals, which I'll just read them out loud. Strategic goal one is student learning, ensuring maximum development, growth, and achievement for all students. Strategic goal two is a learning environment, provide a productive, safe, and supportive learning environment. Strategic goal three is quality staff, cultivate a positive and productive working environment that attracts, develops, retains a high-quality staff. We spent a lot of time talking about that. Strategic goal four, partners in achievement, engage families in the community as vital partners in the education practice. We're working on our communication every day. Strategic goal five, resource responsibility, demonstrate effective and efficient business operations, ensure excellent stewardship of our public resources. We talked about the budget. So I'm encouraged that we are focused on these goals and we're doing the work that we should be doing. That's all I have.
Thank you, Erin.
Great.
Kathy, can I just say one thing?
Yeah.
I would just, I love this Kennedy thing so much, but I would challenge us to look at it a little bit different. And you know what? We might be educating a student that is the next president, that is the next person on the moon. And if we look at each one of our students in that way, I mean, that just blows my mind, the possibilities. So this is a reality. We could have that next person in one of our classrooms. And that's just so exciting to me.
Thanks, Erin. Chris?
I am going to be long-winded tonight. I have a prepared statement. It's kind of, shows the struggles of what we go through as a board and we're always learning, always growing. So I've said from the very beginning that this is a marathon, not a sprint. We knew this work wouldn't be easy or quick. We acknowledged we would make mistakes. At our last meeting, we had a discussion on how the board communicates with staff and the community. We, as a board, allowed that discussion to get away from being strategic. Instead, we got very specific. We allowed the discussion to be focused on how the district communicates in regard to equity issues. We were emotional and frustrations were elevated. How we communicate should be consistent regardless of topic. Communicating regarding equity should be no different than any other topic. While we have acknowledged that we were off-topic and apologies were made to those present at the meeting, we have not had a conversation about the potential harm that was caused or why this specific topic generates such frustration. I believe it is our responsibility to acknowledge our mistakes and make amends to those we harm as individuals and as boards. I personally have struggled with what, what is my responsibility when such mistakes are made. To navigate this problem, I have tried reviewing what experts have told us on the subject. This spring, the board engaged in a training session titled Equity and Educational Imperative. In reviewing my notes, one portion stood out as especially relevant. The urgency in, the urgency of moving from unconscious exclusion to conscious inclusive behaviors. This was illustrated with a diagram that indicated exclusive and inclusive behaviors. I'm afraid we've fallen victim to some of the exclusive behaviors and must make an effort to focus on our inclusive, on their inclusive counterparts. According to our training, exclusive behaviors are colluding, avoiding contact, denying differences, blaming others, and becoming defensive. On the other hand, their counterparts are taking a stand on hurtful behaviors, making mutual contact, valuing individual differences, accepting responsibility, and giving, seeking, and receiving feedback. It is our responsibility to identify when we are being exclusive and intentionally make efforts to be more inclusive. I believe we have avoided contact with those who have raised equity concerns. We have implied we can represent those who are not present. We have blamed those who have raised concerns and, who have raised concerns and have been divisive. According to our training, we should be reaching out to those who have concerns. We should value their diverse perspectives and encourage their feedback. We should accept responsibility for our decisions and stand up when we see hurtful behaviors. This past week, oop, lost my spot. Ming Shelby, who's present, sent out two readings, one on implicit bias and another on multicultural competence in preparation for implicit bias training, which she mentioned earlier, for training in staff. I don't believe it could be more timely. In the first reading, I was reminded everyone has implicit or unconscious bias and we must make an conscious effort to mitigate it. The second reading really dove into what our approach should be. Let me share a few portions with you. Multicultural competence is having respect, respect for the ways others live in and organize the world and an openness to learn from them. Our goal should be to be an ally for all students. According to the material, an ally is an advocate, a person who supports other people's rights to speak for themselves, who resists the temptations to speak as an expert on their behalf. If we do not defer to the leadership of people of color and defend their ability to speak for themselves, we will end up using our expertise to promote ourselves. Part of being multiculturally competent is realizing the limits of your understanding. The goals of multicultural, multicultural competency are increased understanding, respectful communication, and full inclusion of all people. To participate effectively, we need at least a minimal understanding of cultural competency and an openness to learning from other people's cultures. The easy part is attending the trainings, listening to lectures, or doing the readings. The difficult portion is implementing what we learned into our everyday actions. It is difficult to tell someone you know well and respect that they made a mistake. It is difficult to prioritize the feelings of people you don't know or have a difficulty relating to over those we, over those we do. That is how we grow. I know and understand the frustration of making an effort to correct a wrong while feeling those you're trying to help don't appreciate it. I understand the process takes time and we need to be patient before we'll see significant changes we can measure. That said, we need to recognize, recognize there are folks living with problems we are likely never to understand or appreciate. We need to understand that while we ask folks to be patient, we're asking them to continue, continue suffering while we rectify the system. While we may tire of being overwhelmed by one topic, it is much more tiring living with the oppression on a daily basis. Any frustration we feel trying to solve the problem pales in comparison with those living with it. I can only speak for myself, but let me tell you, I'm exhausted. I'm stressed. I feel alone way too often. I have self-doubt and I'm afraid of being labeled as the angry black guy that only wants to talk about equity. I've read many books, listened to podcasts, and attend trainings. I understand that racism, racism and bigotry are intertwined in everything we do, whether we recognize it or not. I know it is our obligation to stand up for those who can't defend themselves and call out our friends, coworkers, and acquaintances when they contribute to oppressive systems. But like I said, doing the right thing is often difficult because our systems were designed to prevent such changes from happening. However, I'm committed to doing this work. I will continue doing this work when it is difficult and I will continue doing it when it causes me stress, sadness, and pain. I recognize I have a position of both power and privilege and it is my responsibility to do what I can to make Batavia a welcoming place. So while sometimes I may feel like I'm doing this work alone, I know there are many out there who will stand beside me and behind me as we continue on this journey. I hope there are board members and administrators who agree. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris. All right, that's all on our agenda tonight. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Mice there?
Second.
Second by Locke, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nobody wants to say later? All right, please don't leave before you fill out the workshop.
It'll just take you like 30 seconds. I even gave you a pen.
Call service.